Bienvenidos, bienvenidos. Mi nombre es Michael Wiglinsky. Soy el organizador de eventos aquí con Mountaineers for Progress. Quiero agradecerles por estar aquí. Mira alrededor, tenemos 572 sillas y solo veo algunos vacíos. Y eso es genial. Aplaudanlos. Quiero agradecer al senador Manchin por asistir a nuestra cumbre. Invitamos a todos los tres de nuestros representantes a estar aquí. Él fue el único que ha estado presentando a las cumbres. El senador Manchin participó en tres cumbres esta semana. Hizo dos el jueves, uno ayer y ahora nuestra hoy. Así que gracias señor. Y esto es lo que... Escuchas esto, pero esto es como la democracia. Tenemos ciudadanos que están aquí, que están involucrados en el proceso. Y eso es lo que la intención de este evento es. Queremos que estéis aquí, estamos involucrados, pero también queremos llevar esto adelante. En planificación de esto, comenzó hace unas semanas. Teníamos cinco o seis personas que eran como, "Claro, cumbre, hagámoslo pasar". Y luego empecé a ir a reuniones. En cada reunión que fui, había más gente. Y la siguiente semana había más gente. A veces fue dos personas, tres personas. Cada vez es más y más gente. Así que eso es lo que queremos, ir desde aquí, tomar esta energía, involucrarse. En sus sillas, cuando entraron, tenían una gran hoja. Esos son todos los organizadores, los coordinadores de eventos y las personas que estaban aquí. Puedes leer esas informaciones. Puedes confirmar si quieres obtener más información de esos grupos. También tenemos representantes de esos grupos aquí. Así que estarán aquí para hablar al final. Y quiero agradecer a nuestros patrocinadores. Tenemos Mountaineers for Progress, Organizando por Acción, Progress Starts Now, West Virginia, Organización Nacional de Mujeres, Chapter de Morgantown, Resist, West Virginia, Planned Parenthood y West Virginians for Affordable Health Care. Aplaudanlos. Bien, gracias. Tenemos un gran programa, vamos a seguir adelante. Tenemos algunos oradores, tienen algunas historias muy buenas. Tenemos algunos expertos y luego vamos directo al senador Manchin. Quiero introducir a nuestro moderador. Ella explicará cómo va el periodo de pregunta y respuesta, qué podemos esperar de ustedes y podemos seguir adelante. Y nuestro moderador hoy, o esta tarde, es una organizadora de la comunidad durante más de 20 años. Es una activista y una persona increíble. Es de Fairmont, West Virginia, Elizabeth Opjoke. Vayan.
Gracias muchísimo por estar aquí hoy. Bienvenidos a su cumbre. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Opjoke y estoy muy, muy orgullosa de ser tu emisora de hoy. Una cosa quiero decir, el evento termina a las 5:30. Así que si ustedes están en fila, por favor, policíenese. El evento termina a las 5:30. Ustedes escucharán que digo eso varias veces. No queremos salir tarde, esta sala está siendo usada justo después de eso. Así que el evento termina a las 5:30. Esto es como la democracia. Ciudadanos diarios organizando para hacer nuestras voces oídas. Quiero agradecer a todos quienes hicieron posible este evento. Si eres parte del equipo de planificación, o si ayudaste a difundir la palabra, o si trajiste a una persona específica aquí, por favor, permanezcan para que podamos reconocerlos. Uno de nuestros organizaciones de socio me gustaría contarles de su Guía de Ciudadanos para la Reforma de la Salud. Está disponible en su sitio web en www.wvach.org, que es West Virginians for Affordable Health Care. El foro de hoy es una cumbre. Sabemos que hay docenas de temas, esto tiene significado para los vecinos de West Virginia. Pero hemos reunido aquí para hablar sobre el tema de sólo la salud y la seguros de salud. Más de 225,000 vecinos de West Virginia ganan seguros de salud a través de la Ley de la Salud de la Seguridad. Esto incluye 25,492 que están recibiendo algún tipo de subsidios para tratamiento de abuso de sustancias. Una ley de reemplazo propuesta reduciría la cobertura para decenas de miles de familias y también aumentaría los premios. Por ejemplo, un 64 año ganando $26,500 a año vería sus tarifas de seguro aumentadas por $13,000. Estamos aquí hoy para hablar de esta propuesta y cómo afecta a nuestras familias de West Virginia. Sabemos que no todos en la área pueden estar aquí hoy debido a trabajo o compromisos anteriores, lo que es por qué estamos subiendo en Facebook Live. Así es como va nuestro programa. Tendremos un programa breve que se seguirá con preguntas y respuestas del público. En el programa, escucharán a un par de personas que están directamente afectadas por este tema. Por favor, denle su paciencia y su gratitud. Es realmente difícil subir aquí y hablar ante 572 personas más toda la prensa. Después de eso, un experto en políticas de salud hablará. Él tomará unos 10 minutos para describir lo que hay en la ley. Así que aprendemos los hechos. Después de eso, invitaremos al senador Manchin a decir algunas palabras. Luego, el resto de la cumbre será testimonio y preguntas hasta que el evento termine. ¿A qué hora? Queremos ser claros sobre algo. Hay una posibilidad de que no todos los que están aquí tengan la oportunidad de contar su historia. Tenemos un tiempo limitado y hay muchos de nosotros aquí, pero hemos trabajado duro para establecer un sistema fair para que podamos escuchar a tantos de ustedes como sea posible. Si ustedes quieren hablar, esas tarjetas que te pido que escribas tus preguntas. Completar una de esas tarjetas con tu nombre en ella y asegúrate de contar tu historia o hacer tu pregunta en la parte de atrás. Debido a que estamos limitados en el tiempo, queremos forzar strongly a las personas que están personalmente y directamente afectadas a venir primero. Esta cumbre es para ustedes. Una vez que hayan terminado con su tarjeta, acaben con Shane con su tarjeta de pregunta y se alineen en el micrófono. Cada persona obtendrá 90 segundos para dar su testimonio o hacer su pregunta. De nuevo, Shane estará contándote. Nos disculpa en advance si tenemos que cortarte. Solo queremos asegurarnos de que obtenemos tantas preguntas y testimonios respondidas. Después de cada pregunta o testimonio, daremos al senador una oportunidad de responder brevemente. Tres notas más sobre las preguntas y el tiempo de respuesta. Primero, sabemos que hay una buena posibilidad de que no todas las preguntas y todos los testimonios obtengan respuestas. Así que hicimos un plan B. Tomaremos cada tarjeta de pregunta. Así que al final, si sus preguntas no han sido respondidas, habrá personas en las puertas para recoger sus tarjetas de pregunta y respuesta. Hemos preguntado al senador si él y su personal estarían dispuestos a responder a cada pregunta que haya enviado, incluso las que no tenemos tiempo para hoy. Han dicho que lo harán. Así que de nuevo, si no obtienes tu testimonio hoy, todavía obtendrás tus preguntas respondidas. En segundo lugar, por favor, pongan todas sus informaciones de contacto en la tarjeta de pregunta. Su nombre final, un correo electrónico y/o número telefónico. De tal manera que el senador y su personal puedan responder de nuevo a ustedes. Una última cosa, estas cumbres no son solo eventos de un tiempo. Los grupos que han organizado este evento están comprometidos en asegurarse de que sus historias y sus preguntas continúan siendo destacadas después de hoy. Quieren hacer eso a través de los medios, en línea y en otras cumbres de salud en todo el estado. Cuando le das a Shane su tarjeta, escribe una letra P en el角落 superior derecha si te interesa que la prensa contacte con usted sobre su historia. De nuevo, gracias por asistir a esta cumbre. Todo es sobre ustedes. Vamos a empezar con nuestro primer orador. Su nombre es Mina Schultz. Es una consejera de intercambio de la ACA y una sobreviviente de cáncer. Mina.
Hola a todos. ¿Pueden escucharme bien? Estoy un poco lenta. Bien, gracias. Es genial ver a todos aquí. Muchas gracias por venir. Seis años atrás, nunca daba un segundo pensamiento a los seguros de salud, ni siquiera un primer pensamiento. En realidad, ningún pensamiento. Era 25 y en la universidad, saludable, lista para empezar un trabajo en el coro de paz. Mis padres sabían que estaba planeando ser insuficiente después de la graduación y gracias a una nueva ley llamada Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud pudieron permitirme saltarme de su plan por un rato hasta que empecé a trabajar. Esta fue probablemente la primera vez que realmente pensé en los seguros de salud. Así que dije, "Claro, lo que sea, me uniré". Unas semanas después, tuve una MRI en mi pierna. Había estado experimentando dolor y sangre que simplemente no iban a desaparecer. Probablemente una lesión corriente, dijo mi doctor, pero hicimos una MRI solo para asegurarnos de que nada se rompió. Cuando salí del centro de imitación ese día, bromeo y pregunté a los técnicos si vieron algo bueno allí. Eran: "Te encantará que hayas venido". Y estoy feliz de haber tenido esa MRI porque capté mi cáncer de hueso temprano. Tuvimos un año de quimio inpatiente y múltiples cirugías para asegurar que mi cáncer agresivo se detuvo en sus tracos. Para ser honesta, ese año fue más difícil para mi familia que para mí. Tuvieron que observar sin ayuda, mientras yo estaba persistentemente drogado e inyectado y mientras aprendí a caminar. Mi hermana, una señora de la secundaria en ese momento, me ayudó a arreglar mi cabello una última vez antes de que todo se desapareciera. Ella pasó muchas noches en mi habitación hospitalera haciendo su tarea de casa. Pero siempre hay una línea dorada. No nos desaparecimos. Esos seis horas de cirugía de reemplazo de pierna costan más de la salario anual de mi madre en una universidad local. Mi primera semana de quimio costó casi lo mismo que su casa. Una de mis inyecciones, usadas para fortalecer mi sistema inmune después de una ronda de quimio, cuesta varios mil dólares. Debido a la ACA, mi familia pasó por mi cáncer con cicatras emocionales, pero sin devastación financiera. Si preguntan cómo estoy ahora, estoy genial. Estaré en mi milestone de cinco años en junio. Gracias. Y adivinen qué hago por vida. Ayudo a las personas a inscribirse en Obamacare. No solo eso, tengo un plan de mercado de la ACA que amo. Obtengo todo el tratamiento de seguimiento que necesito para las cámaras y el trabajo de labor y las visitas de médicos a un precio affordable. Y aseguro que las personas que ayudé obtienen la misma calidad de cobertura. Recientemente ayudé a un retiree con diabetes a conseguir un plan para menos $200 al mes que cubrirá su trabajo de labor y medicamentos. También ayudé a mi vecino con la lema, quien puede trabajar solo parcialmente y participar en la medica de expandidos. Personas, incluida yo, que son valorables y contribuyentes de la sociedad están accediendo a la salud que necesitan debido a la ACA. Tenemos orgullo de permanecer activos de nuestras comunidades. No merecemos tener la madera levantada debajo de nosotros. No podemos aceptar ninguna legislación que provea menos cobertura de lo que tenemos ahora. No podemos volver a ser negados de cobertura por condiciones antiguas. Yo no volveré a ser insuficiente. Así que los políticos están escuchando. Tenemos uno aquí hoy. Estoy muy agradecida por eso. Solo requiere de todas nuestras voces ser oídas. Así que por favor, continúe hablando por mí y por los 24 millones que resisten a perder cobertura si la Ley de la Salud Americana es aprobada. Y prometo hacer lo mismo. Gracias.
Siguiente es Emily Thompson, quien leerá la historia de Rachel Byrne.
Mi nombre es Rachel Byrne y tengo 26. Hace dos años, gradué con dos doctorados en ciencias y tengo un gran trabajo aquí en Morgantown. Todo esto podría no haber sido el caso si no hubiera recibido el tratamiento que tuve en Planned Parenthood. Durante mis años de universidad, tenía poca dinero y no seguros de salud. Estaba financiando mi educación por mi cuenta y pagando todos mis gastos de vida esperando a las tablas en dos restaurantes diferentes. Mis salarios combinados me desqualificaron de cualquier tipo de asistencia, así que cambié a Planned Parenthood para mis exámenes anuales de OB-GYN y control de nacimiento a un porcentaje descartado. Durante uno de mis exámenes anuales, los médicos de Planned Parenthood descubrieron células anormales en mi cervix. Esta fue una experiencia absolutamente terrifyinga para una niña de 19 años, pero el increíble personal de Planned Parenthood me confortó y pudo refermarme a un especialista para tener el procedimiento que previnió las células de convertirse en cáncer cervical. Servicios de Planned Parenthood, que me estaban disponibles, salvó en su vida. Senador Manchin, te pido ahora, ¿puedes jurar que asegurarás que todas las mujeres en West Virginia tendrán acceso a Planned Parenthood para su salud?
Gracias Emily. Siguiente, tenemos Mary Ann Claytor, una defensora de pacientes.
¿Todos pueden escucharme? Estoy un poco fuerte por mi cuenta, pero... Estoy sentada aquí a cargo de mi hijo, que ahora no es capaz de hablar por sí sola. Estaba paralizado por una enfermedad que todavía están tratando de descubrir, una enfermedad neurológica que atacó su cordón espinal y su cerebro. Pero cuando tenía 20 años, tenía otra rara enfermedad que causaba cloturas de sangre. Y la clotura de sangre, cuando la descubrieron, corrió de su rodilla hasta arriba, paró ante su corazón y pasó y dañó su liver. Tuvo que obtener una trasplante de liver. Fue durante ese tiempo que comencé a obtener una mejor comprensión de los seguros y las compañías de seguros y que tienes que leer la print precisa cuando seleccionas tu seguro. Aunque mi era una política proporcionada por el empleador. Así que incurramos casi $800,000 en leyes solo tratando de romper las cloturas de sangre. Tuvo que ser enviado fuera del estado porque muchos de ustedes pueden entender que es difícil obtener calidad de salud en West Virginia. Tienes que ir fuera del estado. Estábamos allí durante seis semanas, quedando en su habitación hospitalera, pero volviendo al hotel para derramar y cosas así. Fui afortunada de que pasamos por ese tiempo y pudimos quedarnos y estar con nuestro hijo. Antes de la ACA, si eso no hubiera pasado cuando tuvo su segunda enfermedad, entonces no habríamos podido mantenerlo en casa. Hubiéramos tenido que enviarlo fuera del estado a una instalación para cuidarlo. Relajamos nuestro seguro para pasar cualquier calidad de tiempo que tengamos con nuestro hijo. Y solo pedí a nuestros representantes que miraran las caras, si tienen sus propios hijos, miren la cara de su hijo. Si no pudieran pasar sus últimos días con ese hijo, sin saber cuándo será ese último día. Y pedí al senador Manchin a luchar por nosotros. Porque tendremos su apoyo si tienes nuestro apoyo. Pero si no tienes nuestro apoyo, te vamos a turnar, igual que nos sentimos que te estamos turnando a nosotros si lo haces. Él va a necesitar nuestra ayuda. Él va a necesitar nuestra ayuda porque estamos contra las compañías de seguros que son motivadas por el beneficio. Estoy ahora luchando por mi tercer apelio para obtener una silla de ruedas mejorada para mi hijo para aumentar la calidad de su vida. ¿Podrían imaginar a alguien que niega una silla de ruedas a una persona que está paralizada desde el cuello hacia abajo? Es porque los costos están getting tan altos. Tenemos que mantener los costos bajo control. Eso hará posible para todos los estadounidenses, todos los vecinos de West Virginia, tener calidad de salud. No solo accesible, pero necesitamos una calidad de salud accesible y de calidad. ¿Alguien en la sala está listo para la salud para todos? De calidad de salud. No que estemos dando los restos que nadie más quiere. Estamos en la misericordia de personas que están impulsadas por el beneficio. Es hora, es hora de cambiar. Es hora de eliminar el dinero de la política para que estén trabajando para nosotros y no están trabajando para las compañías de seguros y sus lobbys y las personas que quieren ganar dinero por los enfermos. Es enfermo lucir por el beneficio de una persona enferma. Así que senador Manchin, te apoyaré si te apoyas a nosotros. Te voy a salir y luchar para que seas reelegido si haces lo que prometiste a todos nosotros. Eso es todo lo que estamos pidiendo. No estamos pidiendo nada más. Gracias a todos por dejarnos compartir nuestra historia. Gracias a todos por venir y ser la voz para las personas que no pueden ser la voz.
Muchas gracias Mary Ann. Siguiente, tenemos a Simon Heater, Profesor de Asociación de Ciencias Políticas en la WVU.
Gracias por invitarme. Quiero empezar por dejarles saber que tengo cinco puntos y haré lo que normalmente dicen los profesores no pueden hacer y ser breve. Lo primero que quería decirles como científico político es que su participación en estos tipos de eventos es importante porque demasiadas personas en este país votan y demasiadas personas se involucran como ustedes. Así que quiero agradecerles por eso. Y quiero agradecer al senador por estar aquí. Él no tiene que estar aquí. No todos los electos están aquí. Y está en una posición difícil. Ciertamente escuchará algunas cosas de la izquierda y la derecha y no va a ser cómodo para él. Así que debería agradecerle por eso también. Lo segundo que quiero hablar sobre fue el sistema de salud americano. Como escuchamos hoy, hace muy bien algunas cosas. Trata el cáncer de hueso, que no muchos sistemas de salud en el mundo pueden hacer. Rescata un bebé que nace prematuro. Pero no hace muchas cosas muy bien. Tenemos costos altos, tenemos calidad baja, tenemos un sistema fragmentado, tenemos un sistema complejo. Tenemos un sistema que es descoordinado. Tenemos un sistema que no es preciso, es medicina basada en evidencia y paga por tratamientos que no funcionan o por tratamientos que funcionan demasiado poco. El sistema es desperdiciado y deja demasiados sin seguro o incapaces de pagar seguros. El tercer punto es que la Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud fue aprobada y abordó algunos de estos problemas, pero indiscutiblemente no abordó todos estos problemas. La principal premisa de la Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud es que si lanzamos un poco más de dinero al sistema, podemos obtener más personas insuficientes. Pero hace muy poco para abordar problemas de calidad y hace muy poco para abordar problemas de costos. Ha ayudado a muchas personas en términos de expansión de la medica de la Medicaid, en términos del mercado individual, en términos de llenar la esfera de donuts para los senadores de Medicare. Pero tiene muchos defectos y, desafortunadamente, dado el clima de Washington DC durante los últimos años, no hemos podido abordar esos defectos. Desafortunadamente, muchos de los problemas que la gente afirma ser resultado de la Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud son en realidad problemas del mayor sistema de salud de Estados Unidos. Y esto me lleva al cuarto punto, la Ley de la Salud Americana, que desafortunadamente no aborda los problemas de la Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud, pero en realidad hace mucho peor a los problemas. Es ingenuo pensar que un estado como West Virginia puede continuar con la expansión de la medica sin los fondos adicionales del gobierno federal. Es igualmente ingenuo pensar que los impuestos por cápsula de Medicare no van a llevar a reducir servicios o reducir la elegibilidad. Y es igualmente ingenuo pensar que los créditos de impuestos, especialmente en un estado con alto costo como el estado de West Virginia, y especialmente para los senadores o personas cercanas a la retirada, serán suficientes para permitirles de pagar seguros de salud accesibles. En realidad, también hará peor la situación porque los planes disponibles tendrán menos beneficios y en realidad sus premios serán mayores si lee correctamente los índices de CBO. También reduciría la durabilidad del fondo de confianza de Medicare. Y en una de las partes más enfermas de la ley, obligará a las víctimas de violencia doméstica a firmar conjuntamente rendimientos de impuestos con sus abusos para calificarse para los créditos de impuestos. Esto me lleva al quinto punto, y es importante, tal vez más importante, incluso si la Ley de la Salud Americana no pasa y no está muy bien en el Senado en este momento, es importante que continúen involucrándose. Es importante que continúen involucrándose porque como la mayoría de los representantes en la Casa de Representantes ha indicado, más leyes relacionadas con la salud se introducirán en la próxima semana. Tal vez más importante, el 90% de la legislación en América proviene de las agencias regulatorias y no del Congreso de Estados Unidos. Y eso significa que muchas cosas vendrán del Departamento de Salud y Servicios Humanos y muchas personas no se preocuparán por ello y eso podría ser igualmente detrimental. Y luego finalmente, quiero señalar su atención al programa de seguros de salud de niños que se expirará más tarde este año. El programa de seguros de salud de niños ha proporcionado seguros de salud para más de 8 millones de niños en todo el país, incluidos miles en West Virginia. Actualmente no está financiado hasta septiembre y nadie está hablando de ello. Gracias.
Gracias Simon. Siguiente, tenemos a Erica Polly, doctora Erica Polly, médica de medicina familiar y especialista en adicción.
Hola Erica. Estoy avergonzada de ser preguntada para hablar aquí. Gracias a todos por venir. El acceso a la salud es tan importante. Realmente quería agradecer al senador Manchin por venir. Y gracias por hablar contra la propuesta de la Ley de la Salud Americana. La ACA no rompió el sistema de salud americano. Ya estaba roto. La Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud fue aprobada. La Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud fue aprobada para tratar de arreglar el sistema. Se hicieron grandes avances. Mil millones que no podían pagar seguros de salud están finalmente capaces de obtener el cuidado que necesitan. La ACA necesita mejora, pero necesitamos arreglarla, no la arruinar. La agenda republicana para repeler la Ley de la Seguridad de la Salud es equivocada. La propuesta de reemplazo GOP es alarmante y de cómo limitaría el acceso a la salud y dañaría a la gente. Muchos de mis pacientes se preocupan que perderán su acceso a la salud y muchos podrían enfrentarse a la desaparición o la desaparición de casa si se enfermaran. Hay personas que trabajan por vida, a veces dos trabajos, pero ahora se califican bajo la expansión de la medica de la Medicaid. Hay buenas razones para que la AARP y al menos 12 de los principales lobbys de salud estén en contra de la propuesta. Para reducir los costos de la salud, necesitamos aumentar el acceso a los servicios de salud primario. Esa es la forma de reducir las visitas en ER y las hospitalizaciones expensive. La propuesta AHCA reduce los costos al limitar el acceso a la cobertura de la salud. Hay mucho sobre esta propuesta que es desagradable. Pero estoy aquí para enfocarme en los leyes eliminando los requisitos de la ACA que cubren la salud mental básica y servicios de adicción. La Medicaid actualmente es la principal contribuyente para el tratamiento de abuso de sustancias en West Virginia. Sin la cobertura de la Medicaid, casi la mitad de la gente en el tratamiento perdería su cuidado. West Virginia lidera a la nación en la muerte de adicción y overdose de opioides por cápsula. Si vives en West Virginia, las probabilidades son de que esta epidemia te haya dado alguna manera. ¿Hay alguien aquí donde esta epidemia te haya dado? Levanten las manos. La adicción es una horrible enfermedad. Es comparable a el cáncer. No discrimina. Como el cáncer, sin cobertura de salud, una persona con la enfermedad puede causar una familia desaparecer. Las familias están sufriendo y la gente está muriendo a la derecha y a la izquierda. No importa si vienes de una buena familia. No importa si eres rico o pobre, pero a diferencia del cáncer, sin embargo, la adicción es estigmatizada y la gente se avergonza de admitir que tiene un problema y temen ser juzgado por su enfermedad. Muchos aferran a creencias antiguas de que tener adicción es una elección y que la gente puede decir no y esparcir su enfermedad como un código olvidado. Bueno, no funciona de esa manera. La adicción es difícil de tratar y muchos especialistas creen que la gente nunca se curó realmente. La gente con adicción es frustrante y se preocupa por el relámpago. Tan mucho que ASAM monitorea el éxito en el tratamiento, no completando un programa, sino más bien por retención en un programa, ya que la tasa de relámpagos es actualmente más de 90% cuando la gente deja el tratamiento. Con la adicción aumentada en nuestras comunidades, tenemos enfermedad aumentada, HIV aumentado y ahora tenemos una epidemia de hepatitis C. Si la gente no puede obtener tratamiento, en 20 años vamos a tener una epidemia de cáncer de liver porque la hepatitis C causa el cáncer de liver. El tratamiento efectivo de hepatitis C está disponible, pero actualmente cuesta aproximadamente $60,000 a $80,000 por caso, lo que hace que sea inaccesible para la mayoría. Con esta epidemia de opioides en nuestras comunidades, las ICU neonatales están llenas de bebés nacidos con adicción sufriendo del síndrome de retiro. Tenemos familias roto, CPS es sobrepeso, el sistema de cuidado de la infancia está inundado, tenemos padres muriendo, tenemos niños usando heroína en la secundaria. Los mortuores están avergonzados y los examinadores médicos están bloqueados. Entre los años 2014 y 2015, la tasa de muerte de opioides de West Virginia aumentó un 16,9%. La Medicaid actualmente provee el 47% de la tratamiento de sustancia asistido a la suboxona y incluso eso es groseramente inadecuado. En West Virginia, a diferencia de los estados circundantes, la Medicaid... In West Virginia, unlike the surrounding states, Medicaid doesn't even cover methadone maintenance therapy, which is the gold standard for opioid abuse treatment. There are currently only nine methadone clinics in the entire state. There are wait lists over one to two-year long for Suboxone therapy at treatment facilities that can take Medicaid. Patients who do get in have to comply with strict criteria regarding frequency of counseling and attendance in 12-step meetings. I repeatedly hear people say they'd lose their job if they took enough time off to keep up with those required appointments. There are nowhere near enough counselors in the state to meet the needs of the population, there are few detox facilities, and even fewer pediatric addiction facilities. So I know a kid, he's 16 years old, I've known him since he was little. He started smoking Percocet and Xanax in his freshman year of high school. He got in trouble with the law, his parents changed his school district, but that didn't help and things got worse. Counseling sessions cost $80 each session by copay, and that was not affordable. He transferred to Valley Mental Health, but he resumed using drugs anyway. The judge gave him a choice, rehab or juvenile detention. He found a placement at Pyramid Rehab in Pittsburgh, but treatment was cut off prematurely by private insurance. He was discharged after 47 days when 120 days were recommended. Three months later, he was using. His mom found him passed out on the stairs. She told me she was terrified he would die. Finally, in December, he got a Medicaid card. With a judicial order, that will pay for him to go to Private Prep School Rehab Center in Gibsonia, PA. We hope he gets the treatment that he needs there, he couldn't get it here. West Virginia lacks the resources. How are people going to get the help they need in the state of West Virginia if Medicaid stops covering addiction treatment? We can't get that help now because of a lack of facilities. Just cracking down on the law isn't going to do the trick. Addiction is the number one public health crisis we face. Increasing access to treatment is so important, we can't afford the societal costs of decreased access to care. With decreased access, there will be serious increase in social consequences. Crime will go up, costly ER visits will increase, there'll be more expensive and preventable hospitalizations, there'll be lost wages in the workforce, as being in treatment is one of the only things that allows people who suffer from addiction to function and maintain employment. The loss of Medicaid coverage for addiction and behavioral health treatment will result in the ultimate cost. Many more lives will be lost. Now, in an effort to increase access, SAMSHA increased the limit of opioid-addicted patients that a certified doctor could treat with Suboxone from 100 to 250 patients. So why now do Republicans propose legislation that would limit the access to that treatment? I don't understand it. I can't support it and nobody should. Why would they seek to limit people's access to any medical care? Well, during his presidential campaign, Mr. Trump made many promises. He promised not to touch Medicaid. He promised not to touch Medicare. He promised to combat drug overdose fatalities and to expand drug treatment programs. Yet this new Republican proposal eliminates the Affordable Care Act's requirement that Medicaid covers basic mental health and addiction services? That's not what the president promised, that's the opposite. Well, we need to keep the successful parts of the Affordable Care Act while fixing its problems, and we need to focus on maintaining affordable healthcare insurance coverage for all of our people.
Thank you, Erica. Next up is Senator Manchin, but previous to that, I would like to... Are there any other elected officials in the room? I've seen a couple. If you would please stand and thank you so very, very much for being here today. The pieces of paper that have all of the organizational names on it, can you... Now that you've signed them, like I'm sure you have, can you please pass them to the outside of the room? All right. I would now like to introduce the senior senator from West Virginia, Joe Manchin. We invited every congressional representative from this district and only Senator Manchin agreed to attend. There is not another member of the West Virginia Congressional delegation who has participated in any public town hall in 2017. Senator Manchin, thank you for taking the time to be here today to answer our concerns and our questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to thank Elizabeth for doing a great job in seeing. Elizabeth is a product of Farmington, West Virginia. Her dad and her whole family went to school with me and we all grew up together, so I know them very well and I'm very proud of what she's doing and being involved the way she is. To all the organizers, I thank them, all of them. This is unbelievable, it really is. God bless you all. I asked Elizabeth, I says, "How many do they expect?" She says, "Oh, about 300." "Well, you have 600, I think." And that's unbelievable, so thank you all. Yeah, you should do that. To Micah, to Shane, to Megan, I thank them. To all of our speakers, you all did absolutely excellent, and I appreciate so much, and it makes a difference, it makes a difference. A personal testimony really makes a difference, and I appreciate you all being here. To... I want to thank the public officials, I saw my good friend Mikey Caputo's here, and I saw my friend Judge Kajo's here, and I don't know if there's any others, but I thank them for being here because sometimes it's a tough one. Anyway, let me... I want to introduce my staff to you. My staff is here, they're going to be here, and we do casework, anything you need help with, anything, we can help you. We're facilitators, we'll try to make sure that we can help you get the help and the assistance you need from any agency in state government or federal government. Mara Boggs is my state director, she's right here. Kim Berry, where's Kim? Kim, raise your hand. Kim's in the back, Kim's right back there, she's one of our top caseworkers. We have Maria Stone Street, where's Maria? Maria's on this side back here, they'll be around. And then we have... Where's Brian Alois? Brian Alois is right here, and TJ is from my DC office. So I want to thank all of them. Let me just say a couple of things here, and then we're going to open it up. Anything you all want to talk about is great, I'm sure that you have a lot of concerns on other issues too, so everything's on the table. The Affordable Care Act is the biggest challenge we face right now in America, it truly is. It's one of the largest social agendas that we have, social policy changes we've ever had. When you put this right next to Medicare and Social Security, it's right up there. And I can tell you one thing, Social Security didn't get it right in 1935, it took a while, and Medicare didn't get it right coming out of the chute either. And it's going to take a while to get this right. There's not a person in the room here that doesn't believe we can fix it. We need to fix it, but you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, you don't repeal it. The politics is so... Can you all hear me? I'm starting to lose voice, but I'm going to do the best I can. Can you hear me back there? You OK? The politics are so bad, let me tell you what we're dealing with. And I met with President Trump four weeks ago, and I told him this, I said, "Mr. President, let me tell you what's happening. My Republican colleagues, your colleagues on the Republican side, are taking you down a primrose path. They made a political promise for the last six, seven years, repeal, repeal. I came to the Senate after Senator Byrd, my beloved Senator Byrd passed away in June of 2010, and we all still miss him, trust me, I miss him more than you miss him. Right, Judy and Tom? I mean, he was something. Anyway, 60 times they voted to repeal it, not one time of those 60 votes that I see something, "Hey, Joe, here's something a little bit better. Hey, Joe, here, this is something that'll fix it." Not one time. And I'm the person they usually go to if they're going to find someone that's willing to work with them and cross over and say, "OK, that makes sense, let's try to make it better." Nobody. So I'm thinking, "OK, now all of a sudden, that's been their mantra." And think about this, they've had success. In 2010, we just about got wiped out, the Democrats, I mean, we started losing all of our House seats, and we started losing Senate seats. By 2014, we'd lost both the House and the Senate. So they think they're... That's a roll now, they think they're on a roll, and I think the people must want this for us to repeal this because we've been working on that. And I'm saying, "Wait a minute." And then they... Now they got to put up or shut up. So I said, "Mr. President, they're telling you that we're going to basically repeal it immediately, but not change anything for two years." I said, "Sir, do you understand they're trying to get through a 2018 political election? That's all they're trying to do. They don't want... They know how devastating this is going to be. They think they can push out all of the losses that people are going to have and the way healthcare will be taken away in 2018 after the election." And I said, "Sir, what they're not telling you, they're going to repeal day one every single tax that pays for this thing. You're going to be $475 billion upside down in the two years. You're going to bust your budget cap, $475 billion, and they haven't even explained that to you yet." I said, "Mr. President, that's just not right. Please don't go down it." Well, I think we might have slowed him up a little bit because then he came right back and he says, "We're going to repeal and replace the same day." I don't think that... Maybe it's a miracle I don't know about, but it doesn't usually work that way, but anyway, it slowed him down, said, "OK, let's do something, if you're going to do it, do it now." Not to put it off to try to play the political game, so at least we've called him out on that. The only thing that I'm saying, I would ask all of you, there is no reason on earth that we can't sit down, Democrats and Republicans, and look at the repair that's needed in the private market. We can fix that. If we all agree, if we all agree, Democrats and Republicans agree that pre-existing condition is inhumane not to allow a person to buy insurance that's affordable even though they've had a horrific healthcare problem, the Republicans tell me they agree with that. They agree that basically that we shouldn't have a cap, and a cap basically says, "I'm sorry, Aunt Mary, you've just used all the money that we could ever afford to spend on you to keep you alive or keep you healthy." We all agree that's inhumane, that's OK if we agree on that, we agree that the 26-year-olds should stay on, we agree that our senior citizens should fill our Medicare Part D hole, the doughnut hole, we all agree on that. If we agree on that, why in the hell you want to throw it out? Why do you want to repeal it and start over? That's all. So I said, "Now..." And here's where the problem is, here's where the problem. If you make, I'm going to use about $75,000 or greater your salary, and you're in the private sector, private market, you're paying higher premiums, you're paying higher deductibles, and you're going to say, "Wait a minute, I'm almost not getting any insurance. I'm not even using, I'm paying all this and I got to pay thousands more until I even get to start using my insurance." That's the private sector market that we can fix. You got to get the product and the market matched up, no one's ever worked on that. I haven't found a 26-year-old yet that's paid $4,600 for the product we have on the market now as soon as they leave their parents. They'll pay the $7.50 fine, but not the $4,600 because it's too costly for them. We can change that by changing what our delivery system is. So those are the things that are working. I want to give a shout out, we've got my friends, the United Mine Workers are here, they have been getting screwed royally, let me tell you. And I want to tell you what's happened, so you know the whole story, because you're probably only hearing part of it. We're fighting right now for our healthcare benefits for our UMWAA retirees and our pension. And right now, we're on a four-month extension. They've been playing this four-month extension. This started in 1946, John L. Lewis basically was going to pull the UMWAA out because my grandparents, everybody worked in the mines, they got nothing. They got nothing, they had no retirement, no healthcare, nothing. He says, "We've built this country, we fought and won two wars, we've given you everything you've got." You won't even... I mean, it's so important for us to have the energy that we had, that basically they said, "OK, the Krugman and Truman, the Krugman Act, basically said that from that day forward, there would be a certain amount of money taken out of every ton of coal that was mined that would go toward the pension and retirement." It wasn't taxpayer dollars, it was going out of the work that they performed. That goes on, everything's fine, "OK, we have that in place." Then in the 1980s, the bankruptcy laws come into place and allows companies to go bankrupt and walk away from their obligation and stick us for what they should have paid. That happened. Then in 2007, 2008, we had the crash. Then we really go upside down. So we have said, "Fine, we've got to pay for." The abandoned mine land money, which comes from every ton of coal you produce in America, goes into a reclamation fund. We're not using any of that money that's basically used for reclamation, we're using the excess money to pay for the miners' pension and retirement fund. We have a great bill, we've been working on it for three years, and Mitch McConnell's killed us every time. We cannot get that bill on the floor, we've used everything we can to hold it up, and I've said, "Right now, I've got a trade agent that they want real bad, and he has to have 60 votes, and I've got him on hold right now, and I'm going to tell you, he's going to stay on hold until we get this miners' protection bill." So... The other thing, we're going to get that done, we're going to get our healthcare done, but we got to fight, come right back and fight pension. I want to talk about opiates. I'm, as a West Virginian, you all have been so kind to me over the years, I've been around here for a long time and many different positions, and I've learned a lot and I've made a lot of mistakes, and I've never made a mistake trying to hurt my state or hurt anybody in my state. I've always learned from every mistake I've made, but I've always tried to do something. And sometimes when you do something, it doesn't work out, you got to fix it. That's what we're doing right now, you got to fix this. So we're the first time in my lifetime that we've been below 50% of the adults that are working age working in West Virginia. It just tears me apart. We still have the best workers in the world, and everyone says, "Oh, you get to West Virginia, my God, you've got a great worker, they'll give you a good day's work for a good day's pay." The only problem is, there's too few of them now. And there's three things that keep you out of the workforce. Lack of skill sets, you're addicted, or you're convicted. You got a conviction on you, you got an addiction on you, or you got a lack of skill sets, or a combination of those three. Well, the one that's killing us is addiction. This addiction, basically, there's not one of us in the room right now, if we're honest with ourselves, that doesn't know somebody in our immediate family, me included, our extended family, or a close friend that hasn't been addicted by either prescription or illicit drugs. That's of epidemic proportion, and if we don't step forward and this generation doesn't fight this, God help us all, because I tell your children, I go to the schools and tell your children, there's not another country can take us on, there's not another country that basically can match up with our military might, nowhere in the world. They know it. There's another economy that even comes close to our economy. We're at about a $20 trillion GDP, China's around 10, 10 and 1/2, and she drops off the scale after that. Nobody, they know they can't. But guess what? They're not going to, they don't have to. They think that we're going to fall from within, they don't think that we'll have a sober enough, a less addicted or well-educated enough workforce to remain a superpower into the 2050s. I mean, you know, they just figure that, "Hey, you can't do it, you are not producing the people that basically can keep us the superpower of the world." So I asked all the kids, "Here's the problem we've got, addiction." I've got a bill called Lifeboat. If you don't do anything, help me on this bill. This bill makes every pharmaceutical manufacturer pay one penny per milligram of opiates that they produce in the country and sell in the country. One penny. Let me tell you what that one penny does. That one penny goes to treatment centers around the country and where it's most needed, and I guarantee you, West Virginia will have one in every community. That will... That one penny, you're not going to believe this, that one penny will produce $1.5 to $2 billion with a B dollars a year. One penny. So people says, "I don't have, I can't get one of my Republican friends to sign on." They said, "Oh, we've took a pledge, no new taxes." I says, "My God, this is a life-saving thing, this doesn't have any home." I said, "Opiate addiction and overdose from prescription drugs, it's killing Democrats, Republicans, liberals, conservatives, it really doesn't care, and it's a silent killer because we don't say anything. We try to fix it ourselves, well, you can't." And what we're saying, what we're saying is, that one thing would give us the money to fund it, and they're taking money away. The Affordable Care Act right now, for the first time, people with mental disorders, mental health, people that basically are addicted are getting help now, and we're paying for it, never did before. They're going to take that away immediately, we're back to square one. That's why we're fighting this so hard. The second thing is, I get a person with an addiction, I go to all the different clinics and everything, I talk to people that have been addicted. I talk to people that have been addicted. Their lives have been ruined. They're just thankful they're still alive because they've overdosed many times and been saved. They said, we want to get cured. So I talked, Matt Boggs has Recovery House down in Huntington. Huntington, West Virginia is ground zero. Ground zero. If you've not been there, it's just awful. But they're fighting it. They're doing it. They have, they have, they have an excellent, uh, 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 really a group of, of excellent doctors. Their town, their community, and the, uh, Marshall University has gone together to have a school of excellence, basically treating from, from conception to birth and a child all the way through. Because what happens is we catch them at the tail end after they've been addicted. We get a baby, neonatal baby, basically comes out addicted from addicted mother. They go home to an addicted lifestyle. They end up repeating the same thing. So it's, it's an all-inclusive thing. The other one is they won't stay in, they won't stay in treatment because they can't get rid of their conviction. They got a felony on their hand, most of it's larceny. So I've said this, we have a bill called Last Chance and then we'll open everything up. This one bill, I need help on this one too. Last Chance says this. If it's not a crime, if it's not a violent crime or sexual crime that you committed, if it's mostly a larceny, you'll have a felony for grand larceny, basically you can, if you go through a one-year recovery, certified recovery plan, one year as a mentor, you're mentoring other people. After that, two years, your sponsors can go to the, to the sentencing judge and the sentencing and basically the arresting officers to go to court to ask for forgiveness and expungement so that you can get back in the workforce. Those are the things that be done. So. With, with that being said, I'm gonna just, we're gonna open it up and we'll talk about anything and everything. And this is my fourth one in two days. And I guarantee you, anything and everything does come up. And I'm happy about that. So, Mike, how are you?
Uh, if any, as you guys can see, there's a huge lines, um, over on this wall. So if you have any questions, please go and stand next to the wall. And you, like I said, it's 90 seconds that you get to tell your story or to ask your question. The Senator will have a little bit longer, not much longer, to answer those questions as much as he can. Because again, what time does the forum end? Okay. And if you guys need anything, I mean, we're here.
Hi, Senator. Hello? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hi. Thank you for coming today. Um, I'm, my name's Kachina Mooney. I'm from Brook County, Weir, in West Virginia. And I'm standing here today. I'm standing here today on behalf of my best friend Alex, who committed suicide last weekend. So I would appreciate it if you could, um, let me finish my entire question. Thank you. Senator Manchin, while I'm encouraged about your position on keeping the ACA intact, I have not heard you speak about the silent killer of West Virginians. Every 12 minutes, someone in our country commits suicide and every 30 seconds, someone attempts to take their own life. This is a public health crisis that is affecting your constituents, our neighbors, especially the poorest among us. McDowell County, our poorest county, has the highest rate of suicide in West Virginia. And West Virginia's population has a 50% higher rate of suicide than compared to our country's average. That's not a coincidence. Poverty is a death sentence. What I heard you say at Thursday's Town Hall in Charleston is that even though your second top donor is your daughter's pharmaceutical company, we are to believe that you are not beholden to and do not work in her favor. You even admitted that while West Virginians are dying daily from suicide and drug overdose, your daughter is one of those who is grossly overpaid in the industry. If you truly don't work in the favor of your donors, why are you pushing so many opiate-related bills? I heard you laugh off medical marijuana in Charleston, saying everyone wants to smoke marijuana for peace, love, and whatever. But for countless veterans, cancer patients, and people living with chronic pain, being denied a safe, natural alternative to the pharmaceuticals that have poisoned every inch of our state is not a laughing matter. With the impending repeal of the ACA, thousands of West Virginians losing access to mental healthcare and lacking the access to medicinal therapies that do help mental illnesses. So how do you project the numbers may change for your constituents who suffer from mental health issues and who consider suicide their only option? And what have you done since your Town Hall in Charleston to educate yourself about the benefits of medical marijuana?
First of all, uh, my daughter, as you know, is CEO of Mylan Pharmaceutical. And she knows that I know that all pharmaceutical, um, people at that level and other people at that healthcare level are all overpaid. Okay? We talk about that. But I don't have control of that. They don't have control of that. It's all, it's just so, so crazy. I don't even understand it. With that being said, with that being said, I'm proud of Mylan, what they've done with, for Morgantown and the amount of people who have jobs and good jobs in Morgantown. I know a lot of people that do. And I hope that they, uh, understand that because that could have been wiped out too and it wasn't. With that being said, I fight opiates all the time. I don't know if, are you, was you referring, you thinking I'm supporting opiates? If Mylan Pharmaceutical or any other pharmaceutical, and that's their product and that's their only product, you better find another product because I can put you out of business if I could. I'll put opiates out. I'd stop opiates completely, but people do need them for pain. I understand that. I do. So there's a balance. As far as the marijuana, here's what we said about marijuana. There's people that want recreational marijuana. And the only thing I can tell you is I go to all of these different, uh, treatment centers and these clinics and addiction centers where people have been addicted. They, usually nine out of 10 of them will tell me, how, I always ask, how'd you get started with, uh, on your addiction? They all tell me. Uh, that's, well, let me just say this, let me say this, that this is exactly, so, uh, so, so this is exactly, and the other three, and people don't, don't think that's true. So I'm trying to learn about it. But I'm telling you what I find out. When I traveled to the addiction centers, they said they started with medical, I'm not medical, but with just recreational marijuana. They said then turns into harder stuff. And I know you're saying it, I know, I know. I'm trying to find out too and I'm trying to learn. So she says, what have I learned? Well, I've learned since Thursday that, that medical marijuana, there, there's a lot of good assets and attributes that it can help. So if that's the case, we're looking at that. I'm talking to doctors and we'll be going back to Washington, doing research on this, finding out doctors and how they feel about it. What's the side effects? What can it do? Can it basically, is it addict people? Does it basically, can you get off of it? Or is it the same as basically you're in any treatment centers later for it too? I don't know, but we're gonna find out. So we're trying everything we can. I'm more, I've said this, what I know about just marijuana, recreational marijuana, I would not be in favor or support recreating, legalizing recreational marijuana. That's just me. And I know that, trust me, it's the same in all, in all three other Town Halls, it's the same. People feel the same about that. So with that, and I know they say, well, Colorado made a lot of money and this and that, uh, and prohibition didn't work. So I've heard every, for the last three days, I've heard a little bit of everything. And we'll take all that in consideration. That's what this is all about. It's for me to under, to understand your concerns and to learn more about it. I can only tell you what I know. And it might not be enough to be, have this conversation you want, but I'm willing to learn. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not acceptable, uh, to the recreational marijuana and legalizing marijuana. I'm more receptive to finding out medical marijuana and what role it can play and how it can help people with their care.
In the interest of time, just one comment about asking questions. And this is for everybody in line. If, as we move through this process, you have your question answered, if you could please take your seat, if your answer, question's been answered satisfactory, please take your seat so that we can cover the widest variety of topics between now and the ending time of 5:30.
Senator Manchin, thank you so much for being here. My name's Jennifer Wagner. I grew up in southern West Virginia and now I live in Morgantown. Um, thank you very much for your opposition to repealing the ACA and health, and your support for healthcare for Americans. Uh, you heard about the vital services that Planned Parenthood provides. Will you support funding for Planned Parenthood? And will you support women's reproductive rights and health?
Let me, let me say, first of all, we're all a product of our environment. I was raised in Little Farmington. I've watched my family, my grandmother, and life is very precious. She always, life is a gift. So I was raised and I was ingrained in me as being as pro-life as I could possibly be. With that being said, I go to Congress. When I was governor, you know, I tried to basically balance this out the best I could because I know how emotional. Trust me, I have a lot of women in my life, my daughters, my, my wife, my mothers, and all of them. So I hear from all different sides of view. I first went to Congress and when first, I think in 2011, a vote came up to defund Planned Parenthood. And me being pro-life, I said, makes sense. They do all the abortions. Then I started learning a little bit more. And I said, well, there's the Hyde Amendment. And they said, Joe, the Hyde Amendment basically makes sure that not one penny of federal dollars go towards paying for an abortion. So people that are against abortions basically can't say my tax dollars were used against my will. So the Hyde Amendment protects that from being done. My friends on the pro-life side said, now, Joe, wait a minute, no. They, I said, listen, I'm looking everywhere I can. If I can find one minute, one penny that goes from the funds of federal dollars that go into paid abortions, then I would vote against funding Planned Parenthood. But I couldn't. So I voted for funding Planned Parenthood. Then, then we saw the horrible, the horrible accusations and videos that came out. And that was all being investigated. Then we had another vote and I voted against Planned Parenthood until that investigation was cleared up. That investigation, I'm understanding, has been cleared up. There is, uh, I think charges against the people that made them, the unwarranted documents. And all I can tell you is this, if it comes up, if Planned Parenthood comes up and it, it comes up again, and there is absolutely no connections whatsoever, everything that basically has been said was false, is proven false, and nothing comes up between now and then, I will vote to fund Planned Parenthood again.
Senator, thank you for being here. I'm Elizabeth Hussey-Wiles. I grew up in Fairmont and now live in Morgantown. And I want to thank you for your support, for wanting to keep the ACA. My husband and I would not be able to afford any kind of health insurance were it not for the marketplace insurance plans and the subsidies provided. He has a small home repair and remodeling company, self-employed. I work for a young, locally-based nonprofit. And again, without those things from the ACA, we would not be able to.
You all are on the, on the, you're from the market expansion subsidies. I know right where you are, yeah.
Um, so thank you for fighting for that.
Everyone thinks that anybody's getting free healthcare, uh, or getting it, they're not working. They're not getting free healthcare. They are working. They're getting some assistance and subsidies and lower prices. So it's not free.
So, uh, so thank you for that. My question is about another issue that's coming up in the Senate that actually has a direct impact on healthcare. In the Hobby Lobby Stores versus Sebelia Supreme Court nominee, Neil Gorsuch signed onto an opinion allowing for-profit employers to refuse to comply with the birth control benefit in the Affordable Care Act. Senator, given that you have stated that you would not vote to reduce any coverage afforded to women under the ACA, do you also oppose Mr. Gorsuch's nomination?
That's a good question. That's one that comes up all the time.
So, and just to follow up real quick, can you commit to getting an answer from Mr. Gorsuch about the Hobby Lobby decision?
Well, I'm gonna meet with Mr. Gorsuch. He has a hearing coming up next week. I will be sitting down with him before I make my final decision on him. I will ask that question directly. We, I haven't had a chance. I've met him. I haven't talked to him. I'll ask him. Let me talk about where we are. I was never so embarrassed as a, especially as a US Senator, but as an American. But as a US Senator sitting there, when Merrick Garland came up for consideration and he was nominated. And my colleagues on the Republican side, some of them wouldn't even let him come in their office and sit down and talk to him. I, I just wasn't raised that way. I keep saying, we just weren't raised that way in West Virginia. We talk to everybody. Might not agree, but we'll talk to you. And I couldn't. So I understand for 12 months, we went without a nominee. At that time, Mitch McConnell says, well, it's because, basically back in 1990, Joe Biden said that we shouldn't be at the last, at someone's last year of their term. And I think it was last three or four months of the term back then, that you shouldn't have that president who's going out, appoint someone for a lifetime appointment. That's what, that's the argument was being made. And that's what Mitch was saying. Well, they set on Merrick Garland for a year. So now we got everybody mad on that side. But we have, I have my, my friend here, the judge, and I can tell you, for this, for democracy to work, you've got to have three branches of government that work, whether we like it or not. You've got to have the executive branch, and I'll speak about that. You have to have the legislative branch, which is I'm part of, and the judicial branch. And the judicial branch does not work with eight members of the Supreme Court. You've got to have nine. You just can't be on a tie and, and throw everything back down. So I truly believe. So here's what we have. Harry Reid pulled the nuclear option. And so you know what the nuclear option is in 2015. I'm the only Democrat in the Senate today that voted against what Harry was doing. I said, Harry, Robert C. Byrd would be rolling over in his grave. If he could come out of his grave, he would come out after you for doing this. Because it's wrong. I said, the, the beauty of the Senate, unlike any other, any other, uh, political body, any other, uh, uh, policy body in the world is so different because we have the rule of the minority. The minority has a 60 vote, or the majority has to have a 60-vote threshold. That gives the minority input. George Washington said, and they asked him, why you have both? Why do you have a bicameral? The Senate, the House can do anything they want to, just with a simple majority, 218. And, and George Washington said, well, he says, that, the member, the people's member will be like a hot cup of tea. Sometimes it's so hot, you can't drink it. And the Senate's supposed to be like the saucer that catches the overflow of the hot tea and cools it off so that you can drink it. That was Washington's explanation back in 1789. So here's what we're dealing with. The nuclear option says basically 51 votes in the Senate. Now, I'm, I'm here to tell you, I think Mitch, Mitch McConnell will say, well, Harry Reid did it in 2015. I'm gonna blow the nuclear option for the Supreme Court. And I am begging them not to. If you do, you destroy the whole, the whole process that we have will be destroyed because then they'll do it with legislation. Then we have no input, no say whatsoever, the minority. And believe me, what goes around comes around. So with Neil Gorsuch, I can't give you a definitive yet. I'm willing to sit and talk to him. My main concern is this, can I keep the 60, 60-vote threshold? And I will vote to support the 60-vote threshold. I will not go down to the 51 vote with everything I have in me. Neil Gorsuch also is whoever replaces, you're replacing, uh, Scalia, Justice Scalia, who is extremely conservative justice. So they're replacing this justice now.[1670.76] So they're replacing this justice now. The next, there's going to be another one, hopefully not, but there, more than likely, you know, with the age and everything else, it'll catch up and there could be another one within this four-year term. That's the concerning. So we're going to try to keep it intact and 60 vote, and I'm, I'll ask him the question. I have no problem asking the question.
Hi, my name is Jill Hess. I'm from Fairmont, West Virginia. My story is that I have a chronic condition, a pre-existing condition that significantly impacts my, my functioning. And I require weekly infusions that before insurance would cost two, or $20,000 a month, $20,000 a month, that far exceeds what I make annually. I require this to function. Now, I could be significantly impaired by changes to the ACA, but I am one of many. In this state, we have such horrible health disparities, chronic illnesses. We are a product of our environment. And so I want to know, how are you going to make sure that the unique nature of West Virginia's public health is honored and understood in Washington? So that when changes come, they aren't going to totally negatively impact our state more devastatingly than it already has been?
Well, that's, I mean, it's the reason we're all here today, fighting the ACA. You repeal that and you think our problems are bad now? They exasperate the problems that we have right now, and that's the problem. How do we get people healthier? How do we keep them healthy lifestyle? Let me give you the CHIPS program. I went and got, when I was governor, when I was your governor, I went to Washington, I says, give me a waiver, let me take care of my children in West Virginia a little bit differently than what you're doing. The CHIPS program is basically the working poor. People who don't have insurance, but they're still working, so we're going to cover their kids. Well, let me tell you, if you're coming from a family that doesn't have insurance, I'll guarantee you, you're not getting routine maintenance, you're not getting preventive care. You're basically using it when you have to. And the kid is basically taken to the hospital and sure the CHIPS will pay for it when they're really sick. So I says, so I said, let me use that same amount of money you give my state, and let me use it for K-2, 5, and 8. Let me start with a kid coming to kindergarten, do their BMI, do the complete workup on that child, and follow them through, try to keep them from getting sick. So we were doing things like that. I said, let me work with my welfare, people on Medicaid. I said, a healthy person on Medicaid does not need the same type of care that a very sick person on Medicaid needs. I only had so much money. It was only so much of your tax money I could spend. So I said, if you're a healthy person and you're on Medicaid and you're on welfare, I want you to go to your nutritional classes, I want you to exercise, I want nutritional, I want you to learn how to cook. You have to learn how to basically live a healthier lifestyle. They beat the living crap out of me on that. And I said, because I can't help the poor people that are so sick, because you're using, all my money's being used up in different areas. So we tried to put common sense to it. And we're going to have to put some common sense to our whole healthcare providership. That's what we haven't done. And we're going to talk about that too. We're going to talk about single payer, because that's a big thing, and we will. We'll get to that.
Thank you, Senator Manchin. My name's Richard Steiner, I'm from Fairmont.
Boy, a lot of, a lot of hometown people here.
My question to you is, what I've read about with the Republicans' changes to the ACA, they want to basically replace it with tax credits. And I'm here on behalf of some of my friends from McDowell County. And that county has the lowest life expectancy in the United States, has one of the lowest per median, per capita incomes. How are they going to be able to afford health insurance if, if it relies on tax credits when they can't even make it? You know, we know that ACA, Obamacare, isn't working. We, everybody can agree with you on that, but it's better than nothing. And with the Republican plan, nothing is what we are going to get.
Let me just say this, it is working where it was intended to work. Basically, we filled in a gap of 20 million people that never had a prayer, never had a chance. They'd have never gotten out. So that's what you can't go back on. You can't go back on that. It's the private, it's the private markets, okay? And we can fix the private markets, but no one wants to fix it, because if you fix it, then basically you told all your people who voted for you, we're going to repeal it. Well, wait a minute, you fixed it. Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to hold you accountable, I won't vote for you because you told me you'd repeal it. Well, don't you think it's better if I fix it? No one makes sense, no one, no rationale anymore about fixing things. So, only thing I can tell you, the tax credit's $575 billion of tax credits to the richest Americans, they don't need it. Okay? But, but if, if we don't use that money that those tax credits would be given to them, if we don't use it wisely and make sure we're getting people healthier, living a quality life, a better life, a more productive life, then we've not done our job either. So it's a responsibility of everybody. I'm, let me talk about, I'm going to talk about single payer, because I know, who's got the question on single payer? I know you do. Bring out single payer, we might as well get right to that, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name's Leslie Gorman, and thank you for having courage, because the other representatives didn't. Senator, are you aware of the House bill, HR 670, I'm sorry, 676, 677, I'm sorry?
No, is that? Okay, what?
It is a Medicare-for-all bill that was introduced in January in the House, no one knows about it.
Well, it doesn't, it's a shame. Until it comes over to the Senate, we usually don't.
I, well, I'm, that's why I'm here. It covers comprehensively everything that we need and how to pay for it.
How, what was the pay for?
It's Medicare-for-all.
No, who pays?
It's a 5% increase on, or tax increase on the, sorry, it's a 5% tax increase on the richest 5% of the country. I actually brought a copy of it with me.
Okay, well, let me just tell you this on, so first of all, this is something we need to talk about, because I want to learn more about it too. Single pay, Canada, what we got? Canada, Denmark, Sweden, UK, they're all on single. I said, I said the same question people ask me, how do they pay for it? Who pays? What's the tax structure? All these things have to, we have to revamp our tax structure in America. We got $20 trillion of debt, and no one's even talking about $20 trillion of debt, and we're going to go to $25 trillion. And this generation's going to pass it on to the kids and the grandkids, which is criminal, what we're doing. But here's what I did find out, and so, let me, let me take Sweden. This Sweden, I couldn't believe this one. Their taxable income, if, from first dollar you make, your first dollar to $47,000, it's zero. But they have a local tax. So the federal, the government of Sweden takes zero from zero, from, from dollar one to $47,000, but they have a minimum tax in their, in their local areas of 28 to 34. So everybody pays 28% on the first dollar they earn, an income in Sweden. If you make 47 to 67%, you pay a 20% federal tax with a 28% local tax for a 48% tax structure. That's not doable for us. Then you go down to the UK. UK has a better one, they go zero, we don't know what, what their local taxes are, but zero to 5,400 pays 10%. So everybody pays something in the UK. Everybody pays 10%, no matter how poor you may be. 5,400 to 34,000 is 20%. 34 to 161 is 40%. And 161 and above is 45%. That's the UK. Canada, 0 to 45% is 15. So the first dollar in Canada is 45, is 15% taxes. 45 to 90, 21, 90 to 142, 26, and it goes progressively up. So I'm willing to look at everything, I truly am. Whatever gives, because I truly believe, if you have a healthy person, and if you go back, if you think the system we had before, and again, I'll refer back to when I was governor, because I had a lot of stuff come at me. And basically, I had all the hospitals coming to me and they said, well, Governor, you've got to give us disproportionate share, we're taking care of all these people and they can't pay. They're coming to the emergency room and we can't turn them away, we got to pay. So I had, I mean, your tax dollars, I had to juggle money around, paying the hospitals to stay open, because they were given all the free care. And then I had, workers' comp was four billion with a B, $4 billion in debt. And the $4 billion was adding up, because you know what happened? Person was working, trying everything they could, didn't have insurance, but the business they worked for, by law, had to have workers' comp. So if they got hurt, wherever they got hurt, they'd cripple back in, they'd hobble into work on Monday and claim a workers' comp claim. It's the only thing they had. If you think that's a decent way to deliver, and that's what the Republicans want to go back to, I sat on the front line and watched that. And we made some changes, it was unbelievable. So that's what we're fighting against. I'm open to look at anything and everything. If there's a way that we can all agree that this is our new tax structure, that's how we're going to pay for it, whatever we're going to do, I'm fine. I'm fine. So we're looking at it.
Okay, my name is Dave Bott, I'm from Morgantown. As a former UMWA labor representative, I left the industry in 96 because with the amended Clean Air Act, I saw the downfall of the industry that was coming. And I took a different career path that scared my family, but we got through it. The Miners Protection Act isn't bailing out the miners, it's bailing out coal companies. And I want to know why we do not address the bankruptcy laws and make pensions and healthcare the first creditors paid in every bankruptcy.
Easy. Dave, you're exactly right. And basically, that has come up, basically with the onslaught of people coming after trying to have a national right to work, and what they've done to prevailing wage, this is coming now to forefront, what's caused all of our problems. We're going to get some traction on this and get some legislation. We'll go anywhere with a Republican-led legislature, but basically, if we don't try, shame on all of us. But you're right, the bankruptcy courts have done, allowing everybody to walk. They've all been able to walk. And holding the bag, I agree, I agree. We ready? You ready?
Hi, Senator Manchin, I'm Barb Cornbrath from Bridgeport, West Virginia. I do appreciate you here, I wish Senator Capito was here as well. Recently, you explained on Morning Joe why you've been so supportive of Mr. Trump lately, and you stated that you thanked him for supporting West Virginia coal miners. You rewarded Mr. Trump by being one of two Democratic senators to approve Scott Pruitt for the head of the EPA. You stood, you stood by Mr. Trump when he signed the amendment allowing it easier for coal companies to pollute our waters. Aside from that, what are you thanking Mr. Trump for? Trump care hurts coal miners. What is Trump doing for coal miners? What exactly do you support when you say you thank him for protecting the coal miners of West Virginia?
Okay, that's, oh. I don't think, I don't think there's any secret in this room, I didn't vote for Donald Trump. I voted for Hillary Clinton. Now, with that being said, with that being said, he got elected. He's our president. And someone asked me when I was running, they said, Senator, what are you going to do if Donald Trump gets elected? I said, I'm going to do the same thing I will if Hillary Clinton gets elected, elected. I'm going to do my job. I'm going to do everything I can to make him the best president, because he's the President of the United States of America. I want my country to succeed, I want my state to succeed, and I've got to try to work with him. Okay, with that being said, I was, I was the chief executive of the state. When I was governor, I went to the state senate, and I said, guys, I'm going to bring a team on board that I really know and I trust. You might not know him, you might not like him, but if they pass three things, if they can pass a background check, if they can do a basically, a financial disclosure and an ethics probe, and they're clean, give them to me. If we screw up, throw us out in four years. I'm going to be there for four years, I just got elected, let me put my team together. So in deference to the executive, I've always tried to let them put their team together. Okay? And I always thought, will and pleasure, you come and go with the executive. They're going to be gone if, if he's gone. Now, with that being said, there's a few of them I couldn't vote for, because I've said, if they didn't have the skill sets. So we'll talk Jeff Sessions first. I voted for Jeff Sessions, and people are up. I know that I heard from a lot of my friends about that one. And let me just say this, again, I said, we're a product of our environment. I was always taught, if I knew a person, and I knew you, I would make my decision on what I knew about you versus about what somebody said about you. That's just the way I was raised. I knew Jeff, I never saw one ounce of bigotry or racism in him. Okay? I didn't. Well, they talked about Senator Byrd the same way, and I never saw any of that in Senator Byrd. So if that happened 50 years ago, I don't know, I wasn't there then. I'm just telling you exactly what I, what I know. Now, here's where we stand now. I'm the only Democrat that voted for Jeff Sessions. Now we've got an FBI investigation on Michael Flynn. FBI investigation. Jeff Sessions, the new Attorney General, there is no way Jeff Sessions should be heading up that investigation or being over that. So I said, Jeff, step aside, step aside, Jeff. Now, when I say it, as the only Democrat that voted for him, they can't say, oh, Manchin's playing politics. He's just saying that because it's political, he wants to get, you know, he didn't vote for the guy anyway. I says, no, I voted for him, he let me down, he can't be in that position. And I've told Jeff Sessions this, if it's proven, if it's proven that you misled or lied under oath to the committee, I'll ask for you to resign. I will do that. That's all I can say. Now, with that on Scott Pruitt, let's talk about, Scott Pruitt basically passed the three things, and, and I know, he comes from an extraction state, I understand, he understands, we have to keep him holding, hold his feet to the fire. But I can assure you, you're going to get Jeff, you're going to get a Scott Pruitt or someone like a Scott Pruitt. He came up, he's knowledgeable, okay, whether we agree or not on certain issues, but I want to talk about the stream buffer rule, wherever she's gone. Okay, the stream buffer rule, I think what you're referring, we're not going to. The Clean Water Act is still in place, the Clean Air Act's going to be in place. Basically, what the stream buffer rule, hold on, before you, and I'm okay, you can holler at me too, I can take that good, I'm okay with it. But here's the thing, the stream buffer rule, what it did, it took all the authority away from the EPA, it took it away from the Corps of Engineers, and basically, and gave it into this 400 new regulations. And I look at the duplicity, and I can tell you, sometimes you weigh it down, we can't have, you know, there's got to be a balance between the economy and the environment. There's got to be a balance somewhere. And that's all I'm looking for. Okay, I, I really, and I, I've got this feedback before, so I understand. But anyway, we're going to hold these, huh? We're not going to drink dirty water. They're not going to pollute, they can't pollute, they'll be in violation and be shut down. We're going to, I think, first of all, we all want clean water and we want clean air, and we're going to make sure we get it, but some of us are going to do it a little differently. Well, not by shutting everybody down on everything, you just can't do it. That's wrong, I'm not for that. I'm not for the cuts in EPA. I want EPA to do its job.
Hi.
We, we need to get to the next question. We're going to the, we're getting to the next question now, thank you.
We need to tell the 65% of the people that voted for him.
You guys, I promise that this would be a very respectable, and, okay, I just didn't want to go back on my promises either.
Okay, my name is Adwana Howard-Jack. I'm from Buchanan, West Virginia. So first of all, I wanted to thank you for, you know, protecting our healthcare, for showing up here today. And I also would like to thank you for voting against Betsy DeVos. Having said that, the Affordable Care, if the Affordable Care Act is repealed as proposed, we will inevitably have more sick kids. Coupled this with the fact that West Virginia public education is already struggling with enrollment and finances, charter schools would take many quality teachers out of public schools. It would divert money from public schools to charter schools. This will be devastating for kids who are already marginalized and who have the cards stacked against them. HR 610 makes my heart hurt for our kids in West Virginia. Education is their hope of breaking the cycle of poverty. Our kids will be unhealthy and uneducated. What will you do to fight for healthcare for our kids and to fight for public education?
That's, it's, it's, that's really, it's at the crux of everything. When Betsy DeVos came, and, and I'm sure she's, she's a very fine woman, I don't know her that well, I've met her, I sat down in my office, and I was, I explained to her, I said, Betsy, you know, education in West Virginia is more than reading, writing, and arithmetic. It could be the place where they only get their, their one and only nutritional meal. It's the place where they get their healthcare. There's so much more to public education. And here was the thing, she passed the three tests as far as her financial FBI background check and ethics probe, but when it really comes down to turning it over to the public education system that's made this the greatest country in, in the world, and a person's never been in, involved in that process, or their kids haven't been involved, I just didn't think she had the knowledge at that, at that level, knowing a public education. That's all. And I'm not, it wasn't, and I told her, it's not personal, I just thought there might be somebody that had better skills or had more experience in the public arena. So I can tell you on that, we're fighting. Head Start, when I was governor again, we put more money towards early childhood education. And also, we had Energy Express, because, I, I, well, I'll share one quick story, real quick story with you. I went, I always go to the, to the, when I go to your schools, your kids' schools, I go to the cafeteria first. I learn more about your school when I go to the cafeteria than I do anyplace else. That tells me everything. So I was, I went in May, I was down in southern West Virginia, I went down to a cafeteria in May. The cook was crying, and she was getting ready to get off for three, a couple, two or three buns. I said, why are you crying? She said, Joe, I'm telling you, these little kids are going to go hungry. I know they're going to go hungry. And I just wish we could be here all year long to feed them. So you've heard me talk about year-long education, it's for many reasons, and that's one of them. But the bottom line is, is that we've got to be looking at things differently. These kids, if it wasn't for our summer programs, Energy Express and Head Start, they got nothing. They've got nothing. And we're going to fight for that.
Senator, this is a follow-up regarding to that same issue, but with another specific area of it.
Within the, oh, I'm Lisa Hall, and I'm from Buchanan also. Within the HR 610, the school vouchers bill, the Every Student Succeeds Act is at risk, and that act allows children with disabilities to receive access to the general education environment and accommodations on their assessments statewide. And so how can you ensure us that the Every Student Succeeds Act will still be available and viable for our children who have disabilities in our education system?
That was another reason also. A lot of people don't even realize that, you know, the laws that we have guarantee that every child gets an opportunity for quality education, no matter what their disabilities or handicaps may be. And we foot that bill, we, that's a, that's a moral responsibility that we've taken on.[1797.66] Some people don't understand that whatsoever and that's why I've, the voucher systems and this charter, I'm sure charter works in some areas in a large metropolitan area, I, I'm, they've got success, that's fine. We don't have it. Our, our tax structure is different, how we support our school systems. You take any dollar away and redirect that dollar, you didn't add any more dollars to it, you redirected it. And you're going to have a lot, a lot of kids that get left out that aren't going to be. So I've said, I can't support that. I cannot support it because I know how fragile our education system is. So we got to continue to be vigilant. That's all you can be and speak out on that.
You got it for me. Hi Senator Manchin, thank you for being here. Karen Watson from Dry Fork, formerly from Charleston for 32 years.
Know where Dry Fork is.
And you know where Dry Fork is. My question does concern the EPA proposed budget cuts of 31%. I'm very, very troubled. It's going to devastate many of the programs, critical programs, Chesapeake Bay, Great Lakes, all the algae blooms that we've all seen. We all care about that, not to mention West Virginia issues. Another area being cut is monitoring and enforcement. I worked for 32 years for the Department of Environmental Protection under your administration as well as about four other governors.
Never cut it either, did we?
And, no, no, we didn't cut it. And I, but what I want to emphasize is because in my role as an attorney for the agency, I often had to deal with EPA in both enforcement issues and in getting the state water pollution control program. I helped to write the laws and the rules to make our West Virginia standards conform to the minimum federal standards. And I can tell you from personal work for 32 years that had it not been for EPA, and I know you've had differences on what I would consider, uh, in the scheme of things, minor, you know, in, in the scheme of things.
Talk about that, but what you're talking about is very important.
But what I'm saying is without, without EPA, West Virginia's implementation of the environmental program would have been fledgling at best. It would have been a race to the bottom with other states. If we don't have a strong federal agency, this state's environment will not prosper.
But basically the way the system had been always, you had the state, the state had primacy, correct?
Because of the rules I helped write.
Because of the rules we complied with. It got, at the end, it got to the point that they, that I talked to, you know, our director at that time, that they didn't even have, West Virginia didn't have any say whatsoever. We were, we were, they said, that's what they were telling me, they walked out. Okay, well, okay.
But bottom line, it's, it's critical that EPA remains strong through this whole country.
I support EPA. I don't have a bitter problem. I just want to do their job and allow the DEP to do its job, allow the Army Corps of Engineers to do its job.
But I would say that the rhetoric that is going around about Obama's war on coal, okay, that that fosters disbelief and lack of credibility in EPA.
Well, I know one thing, it took the 404 water permit away from the Army Corps and took it to the White House. I know that for a fact. And we couldn't get a permit done whatsoever and couldn't do anything. Okay, I'll keep, I'm going to keep the EPA, but I'm going to make sure they do their job. Let's go.
Yes, Senator Manchin, thank you for being here this evening. My name is Warren Hills-Boss from Fairmont, West Virginia, another one of your hometown folks.
Good.
Um, yeah, so my, uh, my question actually regards your healthcare and that of the 534 other members of Congress. You all are covered. You all are covered, you might know where I'm going.
No, I'm fine because I just found out about what my healthcare is.
Oh, well, so my question, my question is though, is the, the congressional healthcare plans really are something of a gold standard in the United States compared?
No, 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 no. I thought so too.
The point, the point is, is many of us, many of your constituents here believe that part of the problem is that many of the Republican legislators do not really have any skin in the game. Would you, should the American Health, uh, Healthcare Act reach the Senate as it currently is, uh, support an amendment if offered, uh, to remove that program altogether so that the 535 members of Congress could, could be in the same boat as the 24 million Americans who would lose their healthcare? Would you support that, sir?
Let's make it, let's make it very clear. This is a misnomer, this is what they call, I don't know what, anyway, I pay, mine's right at a thousand dollars a month. I'm on the exchange. So Mars on, you're on, Mars Tricare, she's a veteran Tricare. Brian, you'll be on the exchange. TJ, where's TJ? You on the exchange? Everybody works, we're on the exchange. I pay a thousand, everybody thinks we get free healthcare for life. That is a bunch of malarkey. That's crazy. I don't know where this stuff gets started. And everybody thinks we get a paycheck for life. And my paycheck stops whenever I stop being a senator and basically my retirement is not my full paycheck. My retirement's 2% of my pay per year for I served. It's about like every other retirement. So I don't know where all this happened. Maybe it was back in the 30s and 40s they did that, but not anymore. But, uh, so I'm paying the thousand dollars a month, comes out of my check. Okay? I'm on the exchange, the DC exchange, because that's where our checks are written from. They're on, is anybody on the West Virginia exchange? Down here as far as on our offices, everybody's DC exchange. Everybody, sent employees are on DC exchange. If this thing changes, it changes all of us too. We're not protected and we shouldn't be protected. If we go down, if you go down, we all go down. That's the way it should be.
I'm Franz Gorman from Hazelton, West Virginia. I just really want to hit on your voting record and ask, why did you twice vote against the re-importation of FDA-approved drugs from Canada?
I did not, I voted for it.
Yes, you did.
Just recently, I voted with old Bernie.
SR 2107 and 769.
No, I don't think so.
Yes, I have it on your record.
We'll check it out because I just voted, we just, we just did it. Uh, we had a voter-ama.
You voted previously against it, sir.
I don't know. No, no, unless it was buried in the bill. I approve it. If it's FDA-approved, that means if the drugs were FDA-approved, now if they were just opening up the market without FDA approval, I'd be against it. Well, if they're FDA-approved, I'm for it and I voted for it. Well, we'll find out. Give me, hey, give me those bills, give them to me. Give me the copy of it. We're going to check it and get back with him. If I messed up, I'm sorry, but I didn't, no, I, that's one thing Bernie and I agree on.
Hi there. My name is Mike Capfield. As you can tell from my accent, I'm not from around here originally, but I've lived in Morgantown for 40 years and I am a citizen. God bless you.
Do you have, you have dual citizen? You a dual citizen?
No.
Just a one?
Just a one.
That's good, you picked the right one.
Yeah. And I grew up under the British Health Service. My grandmother, who didn't pay any taxes, she didn't have two pennies together, she spent weeks in hospital for nothing. My father was treated effectively. My mother's still alive, can walk to the nearest clinic and pays nothing and gets courteous prompt service. And, um, so it's working well there. It's a socialized system, of course, but I don't, my problem with Obamacare and with anything that's being done here is it's only part, even single payer is only part of one of the, of the issue. The other is the vast, uh, medical industry in this country, including the drug companies, of course, but everybody is being paid hugely and we can't afford this. Can you do anything about it?
Well, the, here's the thing about it, they're telling, only thing I understand, let's say prescription drugs, uh, all these big pharmaceutical companies. We're the only country in the world that prices drugs the way we price them. Nobody else. We allow the private sector to discount, to negotiate discounts. That's crazy. The federal government should do that. CMS should do that. It shouldn't be the private sector. We got two companies, three companies. There's three companies that all they do, they're the middleman. Three companies. One company, Express Scripts, I understand, is bigger than Coca-Cola, AT&amp;T put together. And they don't make anything. They just basically take the drug from here and get a discount from the manufacturer and put it over here. And the doctors, you know, I said, we're the greatest shoppers in the world. When I was governor, we tried to put what we called compare care. I wanted to put it up to, you can look in the tonsillectomy, normal procedures where you could go and shop and get the best price. We don't do any of that. We do nothing to try to get the lowest price of delivery for quality goods. But when we shop, we know how to shop for everything else, but we don't know how to shop for healthcare because they won't let us. The system is so convoluted. So I'm trying to change any way I can, any way I can.
Senator, this will be our last question before our wrap-up activity.
Good afternoon, Senator Manchin. Thank you for being here with us today. I wrote a plain vanilla, rather polite question on this white card, but anyone who here knows me knows I can't ask it this way. I am so passionate about this subject that I'm going to throw the card away and speak from my heart and I'd like to talk to you about the way I feel about drugs from a very personal perspective. My name is Pamela Kahler. I live in Morgantown, but I work in Clarksburg and serve all of Harrison County. I left a long, 30-year healthcare executive career to have a new career and that is as a child protective services worker for the state of West Virginia. In addition to that, and you may already know this, I am a 13-year foster parent and adoptive parent for the state of West Virginia. And the reason I tell you both of those things, Senator, is because I have parented 10 children in my home and of them I have adopted eight. Of those 10 children, nine of them came to my home from their families and those families were all devastated by drugs. The other one child that I parented in my home was devastated by the impact of mental illness. As a CPS worker, most people sort of know by conventional wisdom that we have ridiculous caseloads. My ridiculous caseload, which I absolutely love and am passionate for, by the way, is more than 90% families that are devastated by drugs. Yes, I am very concerned about the adults, the users that need treatment and that are dying here in unbelievable numbers in West Virginia every day. But you know who I'm speaking for today? I look like an adult, but I am really a kid. I am speaking for the children who are absolutely devastated by what is happening with substance abuse and addiction. And I absolutely implore you to do everything in your power and to push hard against a very difficult political tide, I know, to protect Medicaid benefits that particularly include treatment for substance abuse and mental health and to please protect any other funding or policy for those same very, very important issues. I hope you will do that. Please tell me how.
Let me, let me ask, I want to make sure I understand. Come here, come here. You, you, you have nine children, you put foster care and you adopted eight of them?
I have parented 10 children and of those 10, I've adopted eight.
Well, I just, that's, that's putting your money where?
But I, I am not up here to promote that for myself. I am just using it as a living example of the way that this issue impacts families and kids. Thank you.
It's the toughest, it's the toughest thing that we've got going. Uh, I know that, I know that we're wrapping up and, and the time, okay, let me just say this to you. I said, I'm a product of my environment, so I'm coming from Farmington, West Virginia. Grew up between the tracks and the creek. I think I was a privileged child. And they say, why were you a privileged child? I said, I had unconditional love. Three-room garage apartment, we didn't have anything. And I'm proud of all my family because I think basically I saw what they taught us. So I grew up, there was always rules, always rules. You had to work, remember the old saying, no work, no eat? Had to work and everybody, you had to help everybody. My grandmother would stop and say a prayer if she saw someone was disabled or handicapped or diseased or whatever. We just were so, I just watched that. So I say, my politics is I'm fiscally responsible and, and socially compassionate. I'm never going to make a decision that I ever think would hurt any, any person, not one human being. I might not make decisions the way you would want me to make them. I try, I try to listen to everybody. I'm never going to do anything that will hurt you. I'm not. If I make a mistake and I mess up, tell me about it, I'll go back and fix it. I said, if you can't change your mind, you can't change anything. And I've just, I've, I've just had the greatest opportunity representing the state because every time I get on television, I'm so careful, I want them to understand how good we are because I know the connotation. And I said, in West Virginia, we don't do it that way. We don't treat people that bad. We help people. We'll do things. I said, we'll reach out and take care of our neighbors. It's just the way we, we were raised, but it's gotten so toxic that everybody, if you're not, if you don't agree with me, then you must be my enemy. I'm sorry, you're not my enemy. If you're Republican, you're not my enemy. President Trump, you're not my enemy. But I want you to know, West Virginians voted for you. I didn't. They did, but basically they need help. Don't repeal the Affordable Care Act. Repair it. Just fix it. That's all we're saying. And then we can fix the rest. So the only thing I can tell you is that I'll give you everything I got, you know, and my daughter, I'm, I'm proud of my daughter. She started out at 21 years of age, working for a little company in the basement and the bottom of a trailer. Worked there for, has been there 25 years and worked her way clear to the top, only in America, I guess. I don't know. Sure, I can't, I, you know, these salaries are all out of whack everywhere. Coaches, my goodness, when I grew up, coach could barely make it. Now the coaches, my goodness, the, the administrators can barely make it, the students can barely make it. So, I mean, you can pick any, any segment of society, it's all out of whack. And I have a number for the White House if you want to write this down. The White House switchboard is 202, 2561414, 202. I, I really do, I believe that President Trump can say, stop this, let's not repeal it, guys, let's fix it. We know where it needs to be fixed, but you throw it out and the politics are so bad, we can't fix it. I don't want to go down that road. I hope he would help us. So 202, 2561414, and I'm sure you know all, you know my numbers, you can get our numbers, the congressional numbers, get the congressional numbers, get our colleagues' numbers, get everybody. Get every, you, I will say this, you've got all 48 senators that are Democrats that absolutely will hold the line and not vote to repeal the Affordable Care Act. All 48. So we need a little bit of help. With that being said.
So Senator, in the interest of time, unfortunately, we could not get to all the questions today. However, we do have something small planned, just to give everybody in the room a voice. All of you have on your chairs, green and red cards and we, we talked in the beginning about how that would be agree and disagree, support, not support. Some of you have agree and disagree signs on the little stick, so either one will work totally fine, but I would ask all of you to take this out now and we're going to have a very brief lightning round, so to speak. So the first one's actually going to be very easy and I think it'll be very interesting for the Senator to see the reactions. Uh, we'll just. Okay, so the first is, we'll make this really brief. The first is, please raise your green card or your agree sign if you'd like to thank the Senator for attending the town hall today. All right. Green or red cards now for agree or disagree. Green card if you support repairing the ACA, red if you support repeal and replace. Okay? We're going to flip the script a little bit. So green if you would support a replacement of the ACA, but only if it were to be for sort of a Sanders-inspired, single-payer healthcare system. All right. As we all know, Tom Price has become the new Secretary of Health and Human Services in the, in Trump's cabinet. And Senator Manchin, I believe you voted against Tom Price, is that correct? So please raise your green card to agree with his vote of no on Tom Price. And red, of course, to disagree. There is, when we did have this topic come up today, there is a tie between the environment There is, when we did have this topic come up today, there is a tie between the environment and healthcare, especially here in West Virginia with a lot of the bills that we're seeing go through our state legislature and how they affect the toxins and so in the water. Scott Pruitt, head of the EPA, Senator Manchin voted for Scott Pruitt. Please raise your green card to agree and red card to disagree. We also discussed, we discussed the links between education and healthcare as well. Betsy DeVos, sorry, Betsy DeVos, Secretary of Education. Senator Manchin voted against Betsy DeVos, green for agree, red for disagree. And finally, our, it pains me to say this phrase dearly, but President Donald Trump has been very strongly supporting this American Healthcare Act, along with many other bills that I believe the majority of people in this room would disagree with. Green card if you have significant concerns with Senator Manchin's approach toward the Trump administration, red if you, sorry, red if you have significant concerns, green if you think that's the right approach. Yeah, I apologize, I actually have made that very confusing here, so. Senator, I want to thank you for coming today. That was a little bit, it was a little more than 50/50, but I just wanted to do that activity to give the people in the room a voice. And to be honest, after spending a couple days with you in Philadelphia last summer, we never had a chance to chat. But I do significantly, I sincerely hope that you understand that your path toward reelection in 2018 does not go through Donald Trump, it goes through the people in this And I would hope that you spend less time asking us to primary you and more time doing exactly what you've done today.